Well, good morning. How's everybody this morning? Today is Thursday, October 25, 2018. It's nine o'clock and the Board of County Commissioners meeting is now open. First thing this morning I'll ask that everybody please take a moment and put your communication device on stun mode. We always do that so that each of us remember to do it. This morning we have prayer from Pastor Doug Holmes from the Christian Life Church. I'll follow that up with a pledge of allegiance. I'll ask that Commissioner Salter please lead us in the pledge this morning. If y'all will please rise and gentlemen, please remove your covers.
Thank you for the honor of being with you today. Let's pray. Loving Heavenly Father, we are so grateful that your mercies are new this morning for the honor and privilege it is to live in this great country and especially this county.
We thank you. We pray for your wisdom. Scripture tells us we can ask and you will not find fault. Thank you. Grant wisdom to our commissioners, our leadership here, and all that goes on here today. May it be honorable in your sight. We pray this in the strong name of Jesus. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Doug, thank you very much. Appreciate the prayer this morning. Commissioner Salter, thank you for leading us in the pledge. All right, at this time, look for approval of the minutes of the September 27, 2018, regular and special meetings and the October 8, 2018 Administrative Committee with Board Action. If any comments or questions or changes to those minutes need noted, seeing none, I'll move that without objection. Hearing none, so move. This time I'll start with Commissioner Williamson and ask if there's any additions or changes to today's agenda.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. No changes.
All right, Commissioner Parker, thank you. Mr. Salter.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Lynchard.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything from staff?
Sir, no changes. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. We had a technical glitch with our new system here. The numbers were dropped off of the agenda, not intentionally. And this is the Commissioner regular meeting, not the Commissioner committee meeting. So a couple of things we need to still work through with the new system. And then three things for clarification on the Spencer Field action item on the agenda. I captured the funding as $125,000 from each District 1 and District 3 lost road paving and then $430,000 from road and bridge reserves. And then similarly on Benny Russell Park, I spelled out the funding there that was discussed. And then on public services, Commissioner Williamson had a question regarding the SBCAs. I've clarified that in the action on the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Anything else? Roy?
No changes.
Okay. Anything else? Ms. Jane?
I have a change. I believe it was item number 20 on my agenda was for Budget Amendment 2019-026. This budget amendment does not affect fiscal year 2019. It affects fiscal year 2018, and I have moved that budget amendment to the regular agenda. It's the exact same budget amendment. It's just the number has changed.
All right. Thank you very much. Anything from the Clerk of Courts or anything from other members of staff? All right. And we will go ahead noting the changes and the additions to the agenda. I'll approve today's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. This morning we have a proclamation. We're going to start out with a proclamation, and I apologize first. I should have had 4-H lead us in the pledge, so that was my error. So I certainly want to apologize for that. I know you certainly took part in that, but I apologize about not asking you to lead. So if y'all come on down front to the podium, we'll read the proclamation. Morning to each one of you. All right. I'll read the proclamation and I'll give you a moment to say a few words. Whereas the 4-H motto, "To make the best better," and whereas connecting youth and adults to work together through volunteer service can bridge differences that separate people, and whereas we, the American people, have a tradition of giving and sharing, and whereas 4-H, 4-H youth, volunteers, and the Cooperative Extension staff have joined to promote a week of national volunteer community service, and whereas 4-H supports our military families and their children through the 4-HOMK, Operation Military Kids, and 4-H Military Partnership programs, whereas volunteer community services, an investment in the future, we all must share. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Rosa County, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 7 through the 13, 2018, as National 4-H Week, and urge the citizens of Santa Rosa County to connect with youth, friends, fellow employees, and relatives, and with school, community, and civic groups to engage in projects benefiting their community. This is passed and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, 25th day of October, 2018, and I have the privilege of signing this on behalf of the board. Thank you for coming today. Yeah, Brittany.
I apologize. Thank you very much. We really appreciate the support from the county commissioners and from the county as a whole for 4-H. We work with youth ages 5 to 18, and 4-H is in every county and every state and on every United States military installation in the world, which is nice for our military kits because no matter where they're stationed, because they get stationed too, no matter where they're stationed, they have something steady with 4-H and they can just continue their projects along. And we really, really appreciate your support. And we have with us today my program assistant, Mary English, and Sidney English, who is a state officer from Santa Rosa County, which is exciting. She's-- most all of the other state officers are in the southern part of Florida, so she's holding down the whole northern part in the panhandle representing us. And she's our State Sergeant at Arms. And we have Trent Grimes and Grace English, and y'all know Kyle Caskey.
Friends, I got to say that, I mean, the 4-H program in Santa Rosa County has always been a vital program and very well-run, but I've seen in the last few years with your leadership how you've raised the bar, got more members. I mean, it's a great program. I enjoy being part of it where I can and looking forward to many years of continuing that progress.
Well, thank you very much. And I know I'll see y'all because we do the Veterans Cookout, and I would definitely invite all of y'all to come grab you a hamburger or a hot dog that day. That's a lot of fun for us.
It is. Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you said that because I was going to say thank y'all for all the work you do in the community, but especially with our veterans, and thank y'all for coming down on Veterans Day, cooking those hamburgers and hot dogs. Y'all make a lot of people's day very special, so thank you.
And thank you guys very much for the opportunity as well. Thank you so much.
If we'll all take guidance from Commissioner Lynchard. He's an official cat herder when it comes to big picture taking. Veterans Day, I'd like to get the word out that we'll be doing the regular program. The Commissioner Salter leads us in and of course other city and county officials. But then, as he mentioned, there'll be hot dogs and hamburgers provided down at the gazebo by the 4-H. It's all volunteers and it's all from donations only, so come on out and enjoy that and respect our veterans. But then as addition to that, about an hour after, hour and a half after the ceremony downtown, we'll be going out to Baghdad Millsite Park. We're planting a tree out there and have a placard. The placard will have all the names of the Santa Rosa County residents that died in World War I. This year is the official anniversary of the end of World War I, and back after World War I, the Board of County Commissioners planted trees and put placards on Berry Hill Street where the school board office is on Berry Hill. Well, over the years, those placards and trees have come out missing or cut down, and Councilwoman Mary Johnson brought it to my attention about this, and we kind of worked on a program. So we will have a tree in Baghdad Millsite Park and a new plaque honoring those veterans that sacrificed their lives in World War I and commemorate that 100th anniversary of the end of World War I. So I'd like to start getting that word out and tell your family and friends, and we'll look forward to seeing you there. All right, move on now with the regularly scheduled program. Other presentations we have this morning are-- item number one is the Community Health of Northwest Florida, and then following that we'll do interfaith ministries. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to have a moment of your time on today's agenda. I am Shandra Smiley, and I'm with Community Health Northwest Florida, formerly known as Santa Rosa Community Clinic. And I have with me in the audience John Porter, our board chair for our Board of Directors. Today, I just wanted to give you a brief overview of what we've been doing in Santa Rosa. There we go. But a brief recap, we are a federally qualified health care center, and our vision is to improve quality health care for individuals who are uninsured, underinsured, fostering healthier, happier, and more productive citizens. And our mission is that we're committed to assuring access to comprehensive quality health care services for uninsured, uninsured residents regardless of age, race, gender, or ability to pay. So some quick facts, Santa Rosa Community Clinic joined the federally qualified health care system back in 2008, and the, once joining the FQHC, the ability to increase our spectrum of services increased. So we're able to provide adult pediatric care, behavioral health and wellness, prescription assistance, case management, laboratory services, and we also provide some outreach and enrollment. We're staffed by one board-certified family physician. Her name is Dr. Hudson. We have a family nurse practitioner, Jeremy Olmstead, a pediatric nurse practitioner, her name is April Archer, and Ashley Jones is our licensed clinical social worker. In total, we have about 15.9 FTEs that support this site. So in summary, in 2017, we saw over 11,000 outpatient encounters. This was a record for us. 3,600 of those are unduplicated residents of Santa Rosa County. We average about 3.1 visits per year. About 3,200 of those visits were charity or sliding fee programs. So as a federally qualified health center, based on income, we appoint a nominal fee. So for 200% below the federal poverty level, members pay $5 for their visit. So it's a cost-effective way of providing health care services and removes the barriers of high copays. The county, Santa Rosa County, funds us at $87,480 annually, and what we use with those funds is to offset those charity care visits. So the 87,000 help support an approximate $26 per charitable visit. Our average annual, our average visit is about $172. We were able to add the board-certified family physician and an additional nurse practitioner in 2017, which gave us the ability to increase our capacity. We did over 3,000 enabling service visits. So these are case management visits, behavioral health and wellness, prescription assistant visits. And by the end of September, we have seen or served over 9,400 visits for this year. And if all holds true, we should exceed over 12,000 visits for 2018. Our sponsors, we receive again 87,000 from the Board of County Commission. Baptist and Sacred Heart Hospital also contribute 25,000 annually. United Way has been very generous, annually giving us about 2,500 to help purchase some needed equipment items. We also receive funding from the federal government as a federally qualified health care center. So this is a dedicated, what's considered a new access point site. We receive $425,000 annually from the federal government, and as long as we are continuing to meet our projections and stay in compliant with that grant, it's not a grant that sunsets in a couple of years. It's a grant that continues as long as we are a federally qualified health center. So here's the patient encounters by year. Back in 2008, you can see we were about 5,300 outpatient visits, and then last year we ended the year with over 11,000. In 2016 and 15, we had some provider turnover. Some of you may remember and have known Dr. Ron Maddox. He worked with us, and so he was scaling back his time with us as he, as his health was failing, and unfortunately, we lost him this past year. Our payer mix, about 30% are charity, about 52% are Medicaid. Medicaid is also a population that has limited access to health care services. Not many private physicians accept Medicaid or they limit how many Medicaid patients they'll accept. And then about 10% Medicare and 8% are private. So just an update on what we've done so far this year. In September, we opened Pace Pediatric, so it's co-located within the Sacred Heart outpatient occupational services on Highway 90. We are maintaining our Level 2 Patient-Centered Medical Home certification, and we're in the process of submitting an application by the end of the year for Level 3. Basically, what that means is that there are quality indicators that we report on, patient satisfaction, access to care. It just designates that we are a comprehensive quality care provider. And finally, in this next upcoming year, there's low-income pool dollars that are federal funds used as a match that can be leveraged to provide health care specifically for uninsured individuals. And in this next coming session, there potentially will be additional low-income pool dollars specifically earmarked for federally qualified health centers. So in the next year, it may be an opportunity to leverage that 87,000 to bring down some additional dollars into the community for health care services. And then I'd like to close in saying Santa Rosa Community Clinic is now Community Health Northwest Florida. One of the things that we did this year was we renamed and rebranded, and the reason for that is we had multiple sites and there was nothing that connected us, as well as a name that embodied or celebrated our identity as community health, and then brand confusion. We were typically confused with the county health department. So it was an opportunity to kind of select something that acknowledges the region we serve and the purpose that we're here for.
Well, thank you for coming out today. We appreciate the role you play in providing that necessary health services to a lot of people in Santa Rosa County. Is there any questions or comments from other board members? Commissioner Salter?
Thank you very much. We appreciate everything you do. I remember the late Dr. Sutton. He was extremely instrumental in getting the first clinic set up, and Dr. Maddox as well. So I had an opportunity to work with both of them, and they were fine men. We miss them so much, but thank you for what you do as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, it says that you're evaluating services for South Santa Rosa County. Could you maybe speak to that a little bit more, where you are on that?
So we're looking at, there's Navarre Midway area. There's some deep pockets of poverty really off of Highway 98 that we're looking at. We've been talking with, potentially working with the health department down in Midway. There's some space that potentially could be available to help support access. Pediatrics, I think, again, Medicaid pediatrics is something that is a challenge for our Medicaid patients to have access to, and then adult and primary care services.
Any idea of a timeline on that?
I do not have a timeline. We're in the, part of our process is we have to collect, basically do a needs assessment, collect the data, submit a proposal to the Health Resources Services Administration, HERSA, and then they will approve the site in order for us to receive our malpractice coverage and it be deemed a site. There's a prescriptive process that we have to follow.
There's definitely a need there, and you've identified it. I hope that you'll step into that need.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. All right. Next on our agenda is Interfaith Ministries. Familiar face. Good morning.
I'm very low-tech here. For those of you who don't know, I'm Shirley Cornet. I am the Executive Director of Interfaith Ministries, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with each of you. I just want you to take a second and imagine that you are the breadwinner for your household, your children, and et cetera, and you're working in a minimum-wage job. Unfortunately, the first part of the month, you were ill a couple of days. So of course, you didn't get paid for those few days that you were ill. Now the rent's coming due, the utilities are coming due, and you don't have the money to pay for them. Not only did you need medical care, but you also needed financial assistance. Those are the citizens of Santa Rosa County that Interfaith Ministries and Good Samaritan Clinic takes care of. We have, I'm sorry? Oh, turn the mic? All right. I thought I was yelling at you. Okay, is that better? Okay, thank you. We cover the entire county of Santa Rosa, and we have clients and patients from as far away as J. Our coverage runs about 40% in Gulf Breeze area, 40% in the Midway-Navarre area, and about 20% here in the north end of the county. And since we started operating our clinic, which is what you guys, this board, has been very, very strong supporters of, and I can't tell you how much we and our patients appreciate that. We opened in 2004, just for a couple of months, and then in 2005, we really geared up and started moving forward. And since that time, since 2005, we have been able to treat over 40,000 patient visits. Before I get too much into the clinic part of it, which is what I really want to emphasize today, there are just several things that I want to tell you that's good about Interfaith Ministries and that is happening now. In July of this year, Interfaith Ministries paid off the mortgage on the building that the clinic is now located in. We own the thrift shop that Interfaith Ministries operates, and we also now own the clinic building. So Interfaith Ministries is debt-free, and we are happy about that. Our plans going forward is to put a new building on some property that we already own. We want to expand our thrift shop, and then put our financial assistance offices also in that building. Our financial assistance offices are currently housed in the rear of the clinic building, and the clinic really needs that space. All of you are familiar with the hurricane that we have recently had. Last week, we were very fortunate to be able to partner with State Farm and with some of the members of the Cajun Navy. We sent food, diapers, and hygiene products to the Weewahichica area. I guess we did a really good job because the Cajun Navy contacted us yesterday and said they need some more food. So when we leave here, my good buddy Fred back there, and I will be going somewhere and purchasing some food so that they can feed the people again in Weewahichica. Other thing that we've done is, last week and this week, I've been in touch with Brad Baker, who has been deployed to Washington County, which as you all know, is a very poor county here in the northwest Florida area. Brad is meeting with some of the officials with the state and with Washington County to find out how Interfaith Ministries can best help them. Two days ago, I received permission from my board to spend up to $10,000 helping the people in Washington County to connect their electricity back to their homes. Another thing that I did offer to Brad when we spoke yesterday is if he would check with the health department there and find out if they need a team to come in and give flu vaccines. The people in that county were actually, and throughout all of the devastation, are going to be very vulnerable to the flu as our season ramps up. So in order to try to help keep these people as healthy as possible with all of the stress that they are under now, we want to send a team into the county and give as many free flu shots as possible. I had asked our medical director, Dr. Candace Ans, to come with me today and give you some information about what's going on at the clinic. Well, her husband came down with a virus on Monday, and bless his heart, he shared that virus with her, and she's sick today. So I'm going to struggle through here the best that I can. As I told you, in the last 13 years since we've been open, Good Samaritan Clinic has treated, has, has had over 40,000 patient visits. Now, for those of you who were not here when we set up the clinic, you may not know that our clinic is strictly a free medical clinic. Nobody gets paid at our clinic, and we don't charge for any of our services. We are funded by Santa Rosa County, by this board, and also by individual donations. We have accomplished everything that we have accomplished with the assistance of approximately 100 volunteers, and those include doctors, nurses, PAs, ARNP's, pharmacists, and lay people. And we have a small dental program also. Currently, we have 12 dentists who have volunteered to help us. They don't come to our clinic because they prefer to use their own equipment and their own staff. So we have a screening process. We screen them and triage the people that need the dental care the most, and then we send them out to the local dentist. In our clinic, we also offer a smoking cessation class. And of course, all of this, again, is free for all of our patients. And just this past class, the class lasts for six weeks, but this past year, we graduated 36 people from that class. And for those of you who don't smoke, which I don't, and I didn't realize, that translates into about $2,000 a year more for each one of those smokers. Last year, our volunteer professionals and lay staff provided over $960,000 in free services. Gulf Breeze Hospital provided us with $610,000 in services. They do our lab work, they do, if we have to have somebody that has an x-ray, MRIs, whatever the, the need calls for. Gulf Breeze Hospital is very good to step up to the plate and help us there. And as I said, we furnish both free medical care and free medications, and last year, we issued a total of $850,000 in free medications. We're an acute care clinic. We can't possibly cover all of the illnesses that we see come through our doors. But we do have great support from the medical community. We have specialists out in the community who are willing to donate their time. We have oncologists who help us, we have surgeons who help us, any specialty that you can think of, we have someone who will help us. And Dr. Ans is excellent at finding those people and getting them to donate their services. I just want to tell you about a couple of the patients that we have treated recently. The first one is a gentleman who presented to us, and he had a sore in his mouth. One of our doctors looked at it and said, "This looks like cancer to me." So he referred him to our volunteer ENT. The ENT took a look at it and said, "Yes, it is cancerous." We sent him to the oncologist, they took a look at him and said, "This is beyond our ability in this community to treat. We believe that this has been working on him so long that it's gone down into his esophagus, and we can't treat that here." What happens with the people, of course, when they have no health insurance and they have no money, they keep putting off going anywhere, hoping that eventually they'll be able to cure themselves, and often that doesn't happen. And that was the case with this man. So Dr. Ans got on the phone, called Shands Hospital down in Orlando, I'm sorry, Gainesville. And with the help of some financial assistance from Interfaith Ministries, we sent this gentleman to Shands, and they are currently treating him for this cancer. He is receiving the x-ray, that's not what you call it, he's receiving treatment before they do surgery on him, because it had gone down into his esophagus. So he is, he is getting treatment for that. The last patient that I would like to tell you about is a lady that came into our clinic several months ago. She had long hair, she had long sleeves, she had long pants on, her hair was pulled down over her face, she had her hands tucked inside the sleeves of her shirt, and you could tell that she was very reluctant to be seen in, in public. Well, she saw one of our doctors, and we have, we have a specialist there, and, who is a dermatologist, and he looked at her and he said, "She has psoriasis." Her entire body was covered with psoriasis. It was so bad that even though she knew she needed to be working, she was ashamed to go out in public and apply for a job. Our dermatologist decided that the only treatment that would help this patient is a new medication that's out, that costs $72,000 a year. Through our patient assistance program, we were able to get this patient the medication that she needed. She was treated for several months, and Dr. Ans told me yesterday that she saw her out in the community last week. The lady has her hair pulled back, she had on short sleeves, she was dressed nicely, she walked with an air of pride, and she is out applying for jobs. Those are the kinds of people that the money that you allocate each year to Good Samaritan Clinic through Interfaith Ministries, those are the kinds of people in our county that we are helping. I can't tell you again how much, how much we appreciate this. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Anybody have any questions?
Shirley, not really a question, just a comment. I know how much you and your husband have put your heart and soul into this over the years I've been able to serve upon this Board of Commissioners, and the effort certainly shows.
Thank you. It's, it's been a blessing to us. We've been doing this for 18 years. So it's, it's really been a blessing for us. And we would like to invite all of you to come to the south edge of the county and visit our clinic, and you don't have to make an appointment or anything, just drop in. You will know that we are open by the number of cars at our parking lot, and we're located at 4435 Gulf Breeze Parkway. And if any of you know of any people in your districts that needs medical care, and they don't have any insurance, and they are, don't have a lot of money, if you please have them call Good Samaritan Clinic, and that number is 850-934-0064. We will make an appointment for them to see one of our docs. We have about 20 doctors. And we will make an appointment for them to see one of our docs and see what we can do to help them. And if we can't help them, I promise you, Dr. Ans and her staff will do everything they can to find somebody, either in this community or outside of this community, to help them. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you and your support.
Thanks for coming today. Thank you very much. And we do have a public hearing we got to take care of here, but I'm going to ask that Stan Nichols, our county tax collector, Stan, if you'll come forward and do your presentation, then we'll go to the public hearing.
Thank you, Chairman Cole. It's an honor for me to come before you today and a pleasure to give our annual report of unspent revenue. And for the benefit of those watching online and the men and women here in the audience, the Tax Collector's Office receives a fee or a commission for practically every service we do. We may get 2% of what we collect in ad valorem tax dollars for property taxes. We may receive $6 when we issue a driver's license and, and earn a few dollars when we renew someone's tag. And all of those funds accumulate throughout the year, and this is the revenue that our office uses to pay our employees' salaries and their benefits, and to purchase the equipment that we need and conduct our business. And at the end of our fiscal year, the, if there's a difference between the revenues that we collected and our expenses for the year, we then turn that money back over to the taxing authorities. And so that's what this report is this morning, and it's my pleasure to report to you that this year, we're returning $583,106 to the taxing authorities. Of that $583,000, $565,000 approximately is coming back to the Board of County Commissioners, and then the different fire districts and the northwest Florida water management receive some, some of funding as well. That's the difference between the two. So that $565,000 will be hitting the county's bank account later today, Jane. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Stan, just thank you for, and all the elected officials here in Santa Rosa County. It's phenomenal how all the departments work together and, you know, for the benefit of all our taxpayers and our citizens. So thank you for all you do.
I appreciate that comment. We are very fortunate that the Board, the staff, and all the constitutional officers really do work hand-in-hand. When someone comes into our office and gets a, a driver's license, we sign them up to be a registered voter, and that information is transferred to TAPi at the supervisor's office. And they come in and they have an issue, and maybe they have a ticket they haven't paid, and their driver license has been suspended. So then they, they go work with Don Spencer's office at the clerks and, and take care of that. And then, of course, property tax bills are about to go out in the mail next week, so we work closely with the property appraiser's office and the staff there. And Greg Brown's office does an exceptional job as well. So we're, we're very fortunate that we all work together to, to conduct the business of Santa Rosa County. I can't think of a better place I'd want to live and work. So I appreciate the relationship that we have with each of you, working together to serve Santa Rosa, because that's, at the end of the day, that's what it's all about, is service to the public. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Appreciate it.
All right. He's absolutely... He's absolutely right. A great place to live, work, play, raise a family.
No big check.
Not this year, it's coming electronic.
Reduced paperwork, right? All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. We'll move now to the public hearing that we have for this morning. This morning's public hearing is a proposed ordinance related to voting regulations and restrictions for Polynesian Isle canals. Dan, you want to take this for me, please? Or who do we have?
I'll take it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Roy.
This is a, an ordinance that was requested by the homeowners in the Polynesian Isles that the Fish and Wildlife, the Fish and Wildlife Commission restricts what we can restrict pretty greatly, but this allows, or this does deal with those areas of the canal system that are greater than 75 feet wide, which is something that we can normally not restrict without permission from the Fish and Wildlife. And they have, have reviewed the ordinance on a tentative preliminary basis, and once we enact it, assuming the board votes in favor today, we'll send it down for final review by them, and then we'll be able to put it into effect.
Open it now up to comments from board members. Commissioner Lynchard, this is your area.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is related to no wait zone signage.
That's correct.
No and minimum wait.
No and minimum wait zone signage. Been in the works for some time, but hopefully this will start to wrap it up.
All right. Okay, at this time, seeing no other board comment, I'll open it to the public. Seeing nobody approaching the microphone, do we have any, anybody put in a request? Randy? Okay, no requests have been put in, so I will close public comment. Commissioner Lynchard, what's your favor?
Mr. Chairman, I would move the proposed ordinance without objection.
Seeing none, proposed ordinance passes. This closes the public comment and public hearing meeting for this morning.
We have a, we have a second ordinance, sir.
Oh, okay. All right. Roy, take a second.
Thank you. The ordinance, the document that I handed to each of you previously is the ordinance that was, I meant, that was advertised for enactment today, has to do with Santa Rosa Shores, the Municipal Service Benefit Unit for the maintenance of the canals and channels there. The, this, as I said, advertised for the public hearing this morning. The ordinance, that ordinance was in the backup for the committee meeting on Monday. The ordinance that is actually in the backup today has to do with the shores of Santa Rosa, which is a separate subdivision that did not come into, to effect, actually, was never developed. And we had, the repeal of the special district related to that was on our agenda at the Hurricane Council meeting, and it's advertised for our next meeting. But the ordinance that is in, that I furnished to you and that has been advertised in, in the backup previously, does establish or amend the Santa Rosa Shores MSBU to clarify that it can be used for channel maintenance and maintenance and dredging permitting and those things that are necessary to, to maintain those canals down there.
Okay. Comments from board members? Commissioner Lynchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rod Miller is here on behalf of the association.
Yes, hello.
Could you turn your mic on there, Mr. Miller?
All right, I'll open the pub, open the public hearing.
There you go. Okay. I'm Rodney Miller. I'm president of Santa Rosa Shores Homeowners, Inc. And I just want to thank the chairman and the commissioners for helping us clarify this and attorney. We did have one point of clarification, or a couple of points of clarification. Part of this maintenance requirement for the channels includes mitigation of the seagrass, means we would have to transplant the seagrass in order to accomplish the dredging, and then also the marking of the channels. This critical, important points with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Coast Guard, of course, for that. So we just want to make sure the language in there will cover that as well, okay?
I think it's broad enough to cover anything necessary for the permitting, mitigation, and, and maintenance, and monitoring also after the, the activities are complete.
Yes, sir. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Linda Young. I'm the executive director of the Florida Clean Water Network and a resident of Navarre. I have a sheet here I can turn in. I just had a couple, a question and a quick comment about this project. I guess my question is, I've spoken with Mr. Lynchard about this previously, and I understand your position on it, but I still do not understand why the county is the applicant for this project. That has never been made clear to me. So after I make my other comment, if any, maybe you could answer that, I would appreciate that. But my comment is that, you know, you've heard from me before on this. I continue to be very concerned that the county makes a lot of decisions that end up being detrimental to our water quality in this county, particularly Santa Rosa Sound. And this is a big one. This is a real big one. And I don't know how much you get involved with Army Corps of Engineer permitting, but I have been involved with it for many years throughout my career. And I can tell you that the Army Corps of Engineers almost never denies a permit. Almost never. Like in Florida, maybe twice in the last 20 or 30 years. They will push back a little bit and do some negotiating with applicants, but they don't do that. And they're poised to deny this permit. I'm not saying it'll end up happening, but this is one of the stronger pushbacks that I've ever seen. Why? Because this is an egregious, egregious plan and a proposal. And you know, DEP actually denied this permit for years until the political situation changed. It's not a good idea. People don't do this kind of thing anywhere in Florida anymore. And, you know, I just wonder, at what point in the future, how bad does our water quality have to get, especially in Santa Rosa Sound, which is, you know, it's like the main artery through this county? How bad does it have to get before our county leaders start taking water quality seriously through the decisions that you make? And I don't mean to be disrespectful, I'm just really, really concerned as someone who grew up here and knows what Santa Rosa Sound used to look like. It looks real pretty to somebody that just moves here, and they don't know, but I do know. And it's not in good shape. And I've, you know, I told you a couple of years ago, when I talked to you about some other projects that you approved, to remember the term Indian River Lagoon. And you've seen lately in the news, if you haven't been down there, what I'm talking about. We don't want our sound to turn up, to end up like the Indian River Lagoon, and you're headed there with every wetland development that you approve, every sewage discharge to the sound that you approve, and all these dredging projects. You are killing it. And so I just wonder, when are you going to have the courage to start saying no? And I'll stop. Can you tell me why the county is the applicant and why we, as taxpayers, should be okay with taking on that liability? Because ultimately, the liability is ours. These people that, that want this to happen in Santa Rosa Shores, I understand why it's a lot of money down the road, because these grass transplantings are not going to work. They have never worked. They are not going to work. And I don't think we can count, as county, on somebody just going, "Oh, well, whatever, you know, let's just forget about all those acres of grass beds that we destroyed." The constant dredging to keep the channels open. Why, as taxpayers, do we want this responsibility?
Mr. Andrews, can you address the applicant and then the, any potential liability for the county?
The county is helping facilitate the application that's being put forward by the Homeowners Association. And as far as liability from the county, the, the permittee, which will be the Homeowners Association, will have the responsibility for the monitoring, and this MSBU is designed and intended to put the cost of that on the, the homeowners in Santa Rosa Shores, not on Santa Rosa County, which is not funding this, but through the Homeowners Association and the MSBU that's established and amended by this ordinance.
But, Mr. Andrews, the applicant to the Army Corps of Engineers is Santa Rosa County alone, Santa Rosa County. Am I not correct? I can show you the application in Santa Rosa County. And the letter from the Corps saying that they are poised to deny this permit, you know, because of many good reasons, is to the county.
And that is to facilitate the Homeowners Association in their design and desire to maintain the canals.
I know, but you're not answering my question. The applicant is Santa Rosa County. Facilitate is not the same as being the applicant.
The, the canals were dedicated to the public as far as the ownership thereof, not the maintenance, but the ownership thereof, in the plot of the subdivision many years ago. And therefore, as the fee simple, or, or as the easement owner of that, the county has to have to make the application. And the board voted to do that on the behalf of the homeowners in, in the subdivision.
You look like you're about to say something.
The county is facilitating the collection of the MSBU and, and the payment for the project. I mean, this is, it's a, the canals have been there for, how long?
Forty years.
Forty years. The homeowners want to ensure continued access to the water, and that is what this will do.
No, that's not, I don't, I, I beg to differ. That's not what this will do. They will have continued access, as they always, as they have for 40 years. And you're both attorneys, and so, and I'm not, so I, you know, shouldn't probably argue the law with you, but as the applicant, you have responsibility, the financial responsibility, which will be serious for here on out, for the mitigation and for the maintenance.
All right, I understand your point, and we're going to go ahead and move on, but I, kind of taken back with some of the comments you made about this board turning a blind eye to the environment and the blind eye to our sound. We're engaged in a program to move the effluent off of Navarre Beach to a RIB system up on Air Force Base, so that's one thing that we're concentrating on. We've been engaged with a nature conservancy in an oyster replenishing program. We're currently engaging with a estuary, National Estuary Program, again, to protect and improve the quality of our water in all of our estuaries. And part of this board's charge is public safety and also public recreation, public access, and what they expect from their Board of Commissioners. And you say they continue to have access, but it's not to the ability of what they could have before. Sure, you can go out through there in a rowboat, but if somebody has a larger boat, you can't get through it without scarring the bottom. So I'm, I'm in favor of us continuing moving forward. As was stated, it's not coming out of the taxpayers' pockets, it's coming out through an MSBU, through the homeowners out there. Mr. Andrews explained how we have to maintain it. It's been given to Santa Rosa County, just as if a road was given to us from a developer. We have to maintain it from then on, once we accept it. So that's why our name's on there. So I understand your point, but I'm a little taken back with things, an indication that this board is unenvironmental. We've also engaged in a methane gas recapturing program that we're currently expanding on, so I don't want to put the emphasis on, to the citizens that we're not engaged in protecting our environment, not concerned with our environment, so.
And I, and I apologize if I've offended you.
Not offended, I just wanted to say the record.
I tend to just talk very directly, and I'm, I'm, you know, I have the highest hopes that you're going to get the Navarre Beach effluent out of the sound. I'm a little bit jaded, because I've been hearing that for 20 years. And I did have a conversation before I submitted my comments on the DEP permit with Mr. Blaylock, and he updated me on, on the progress that's trying to be made. But I've been hearing this, that's, that has not changed in years. I've been hearing the same thing, so.
Unfortunately, it's a very costly project, and we're having to work with the Air Force.
Right.
We continue to, but it's not something that's fallen on deaf ears, so.
That's been the case for a while. So thank you very much for the opportunity to share my ongoing concerns. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'd like to address a couple of points. I'd invite everyone to visit our website, for santarosashores.org. We address a lot of environmental concerns. We have over 230 parcels that are on the water. There is no one that's more concerned about the water quality and the quality of the water and, and taking care of the environment than our neighborhood is, because we live there daily. And you also, one of the problems we currently have is the water levels are so low in the channels that we're destroying the seagrass that's in there. We want to mitigate that and remove that seagrass, transplant it to an area where it's needed. And by dredging the channels deeper, it's a documented fact that the seagrass will regrow in the bottom of the channel. The channels are so narrow now, and it's, all you have to do is look at a Google search in the area, and you can see the scarring in the channels where the seagrass is. We want to mitigate that and move that seagrass to an area where it can be repopulated and grow. And once we dredge the channels to reasonable depth, we are narrowing the channel dredging, and we're reducing the depth so that the seagrass will grow within those channels once we get it deeper. But the boats that we have in there now are damaging the, the seagrass as it is, okay? So we're, understand the water quality. There's no one more concerned about the fish and the marine life than our residents in Santa Rosa Shores, and thank you for that.
Thank you. Ma'am, did you have a comment?
Please. My name is Dr. Enid Siskin.
Give me just a moment. If anybody else has comments on this, if you please, make sure you fill out a speakers form and be ready to speak, possibly even move up to the front row so I know who all's in line, please. Thank you. Pardon me.
My name is Dr. Enid Siskin. I live in 4172 Madura Fort in Gulf Breeze. And I have been working on this project, in, in that position to this project for over 20 years. I have sat there and met with DEP when Robert Cooley was the head of that Northwest District, Mary Jane. And the problem is that the whole mitigation is that seagrasses will grow somewhere else, and they won't. The literature is very clear that in this area, seagrasses, particularly thylacia, which is the important seagrass that they need, will not grow. Both the National Marine Fisheries, the EPA, and the Army Corps of Engineers has, and I quote, "This project will have substantial and unacceptable impact on essential fish habitats and submerged aquatic vegetation." This is why the Army Corps has opposed it, because other federal agencies have gone through this project and have disagreed that it is either necessary or good for the environment and good for the water quality. There is no, at this point, no overriding public need. We, this, these seagrasses are public, public resources, that there's no overriding public need. There's a difference between maintenance dredging and this project, which will dig up and try to transplant, no doubt unsuccessfully, several acres of seagrasses, and I'm hoping that the county will not continue going forward with this. Thanks. Because it does create a dangerous precedent. When they can't get out, and in some- When they can't get out, and if somebody else can't get out, they will do the set, well, they'll come to you and say, "Listen, those guys got to do it, why can't we? So please, don't do this."
All right. Any other comments or questions? Sir?
Kind of contrary to the last two speakers, new methods of transplanting seagrass have been approved, and you can do it now. In the past, where it was tried before in the past, they were not successful. It can be done now. There are several ways going about. The primary difference from these speakers to the reality of the real facts is, if you were building a new channel, what they're saying is true. You know, you would be taking the environment and downgrading it. We're not talking about building anything new. We're talking about an existing channel that we're running out there every day, through there, and it's shallow, and we're tearing at the bottom. We're stirring up sediments. Once we dredge the channels and the grass grows back in there, and we disturb it less, the water quality will actually be improved. So the primary difference between what you're hearing from some of the speakers and what the reality and the facts are, the environment will be better off after the project. Thank you for that chance to comment.
Thank you. I do have a question. If, I'm hearing that the Army Corps and DEP are against this project, and if they're not going to permit it, how is it moving forward?
This is part of the permitting process. They, the Army Corps had some comments over the, I guess, early summer, and this is part of the process of addressing those comments.
Okay.
So they're not permitted yet. It's, it's still in the permitting process.
We have a, you- Sir, come to the mic, please. We're good. I want to hear your comments, but we have to do it at the podium.
Rodney Miller again. We have a permit from the Florida DEP to accomplish this work. It's been documented. We have documentation where the grass has been transplanted in the Northwest Florida area, and it's grown. We also are now, the Army Corps is the last one that has to permit this, and we're addressing every item of concern that's been raised through public comments, through the National Marine Fisheries, the EPA, and the Army Corps. So that's what we're going through, is going through this process to document each of those concerns. And like we said previously, we're all concerned about the water quality in our neighborhoods, so we're not going to do anything to harm the environment. We want to improve it. And if we don't do anything, we're going to continue to destroy seagrass within the channels, whether boats entering and out of a channel. It's not a new project. This is an existing project, or existing channels that's been there for forty years. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing nobody else approaching the podium, I'm now going to close public comment. Mr. Lynchard.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval without objection.
Seeing none, so fast. All right. Let's take a ten-minute break, come back a quarter after, about twenty after, please. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started again. If you all please have your seat. Before we get back to our regular agenda, I have some, one more presentation. And this past week, the United States Navy had what's called a fly-in out of Whitingfield in combination with NAS Pensacola. And, you know, a lot of people go out to NAS to watch the Blue Angels, or out to the beach to watch the Blue Angels, or out to Whitingfield, but in Santa Rosa County, you just might get an airshow every day or anywhere you're at. So I'm going to ask our video department back there if they'll run what I was able to watch yesterday, just from the field beside my house, so. I'd like to entitle this "The Sound of Freedom." And if that thing flying overhead at that low pace-
Sir, fine freedom.
-doesn't give you chills, then you better check your pulse, because it's a, it's a pretty awesome machine. And that's what Whitingfield and NAS Pensacola is all about, is training our young people to be naval aviators and fly machinery like that, so. Our hats off to everybody that serves our country, so.
So if I could jump in here, what, it's not a presentation, but just an acknowledgement. Sheriff Johnson stopped by my office yesterday to return the, any excess funds that were left in his budget from the end of last fiscal year. As you know, in the budget discussions, he committed to returning seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand, and he dropped the check off yesterday for eight-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars, so a hundred-and-five-thousand dollars. In addition, that we will, at a future meeting, transfer that money to our capital fund for future capital needs.
So that's three departments reporting so far. Have we heard from Greg Brown's office also? I know Stan and Donnie and the sheriff.
Yes, we've heard from Greg Brown. He's returning two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand to the county.
Okay. Great. So that's close to, between the four departments, that's close to two million dollars, right at two million dollars?
Yes, sir, and that's enough to fund Tappy's office next year.
Fund, yeah. You better not let her hear you say that. You'll be running from her. All right, we'll go ahead and get the agenda wrapped up for today. Sam, did you have it?
I was just going to say, I've had the pleasures, as well as Commissioner Lynchard, of spending some extra time down there today. I think they've accumulated a few new requests they'll be bringing forward to us, and we were down there talking. I just wanted to say, Commissioner-elect Peach is welcome to come down there and get involved with the canvassing board exercises as much as he would like this year to prepare himself for upcoming years. I've told him, unfortunately, regrettably, this may be my last canvassing board venture for a few years, so, yeah, just wanted to throw that out there publicly so you know you're welcome.
We will hook him up.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Didn't see that train, no, I tell you. All right, we're on item number two. Item number two is the interlocal agreement for Pensacola and Perdido Bay Estuary Program. This is a discussion of the approval of the resolution and interlocal agreement for the Pensacola and Perdido Bay Estuary Program, supporting Commissioner Cole to serve as chairman of the Perdido and Pensacola Bay Estuary Program. I appreciate the confidence this board's put in me to handle that. We did have a pretty extensive meeting yesterday of that program. The nominations will remain open till November tenth, in lieu of any potential changes to make up of the Board of Commissioners. Quite a few other items that were on that, and I will make that information available to the county administrator so he can make it available to the public and also my fellow board members. I'll move that without objection. Hearing none passes. Again, thank you, gentlemen. Meeting list is here for you, unless there's otherwise noted or any changes that need to be noted. The list is published, both on our internet site and also on hard copy for your- for your approval and notice. Seeing no changes, no noted change. Commissioner Lynch, I'm sorry.
Just a reminder, Mr. Chairman, that our November 8 Commission Regular Meeting will be held at the Tiger Point Community Center.
Okay, and, all right, thank you, Commissioner Lynch. Any other changes? All right, and I'll approve those without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Economic Development, Engineer Report, Public Service Committee, and Public Works Committee were all taken care of through the consent agenda. Any changes need to be noted there?
No, sir, we just need to go back and approve the consent agenda. We didn't actually take action. So if you, I would recommend finishing the Budget and Financial Management on regular, and then approving the consent agenda.
All right, all right, so we will look for any changes at that when we move back to the consent agenda. Item one under Budget and Finance, Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item one is to recommend approval of Budget Amendment 2018-215 in the amount of $38,954 to recognize grant revenue owed from DEP Cost Share Agreement 18-SR1 for fiscal year 2018 eligible expenditures, including sea turtle monitoring, beach tilling, shorebird monitoring during tilling, surveying, and physical monitoring associated with the beach renourishment project. And to note, sea turtle monitoring invoices are paid from Fund 107, therefore the anticipated revenue should be recognized in Fund 107. Mr. Chairman, unless there are any questions, I will move that without objection. Mr. Cooley, were you addressing this item?
No.
Okay, all right, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that concludes Budget and Financial Management.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Lynch. On our consent agenda, under Administrative, Engineers Report, Economic Development, Public Service, Public Works, and the items that weren't mentioned today under Budget were passed on Monday. At this time, is there any changes or comments need to be made on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll move the entire consent agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. This time, I will open the floor to public forum. Mr. Cooley.
Well, I just, I just wanted to, again, I rise in opposition on the, not so much the purchase of the Kennedy property, but the fact that Greg Brown has it listed at $240,000, and the taxpayers of Santa Rosa County are gonna be on the hook for $360,000. Mr. Parker, you're a real estate guy, I don't, I don't know that you would think 35% higher would be a good idea, but you guys have made your decision, so I'll just leave my opposition where it's at. So we're now public forum, right?
Let me, let me, real quick, since you gave me a chance there, I had the opportunity to talk to Greg Brown, and as you know, I'm one of his biggest fans earlier in the week. I was just telling him that I, you know, how I went through my short story about how we came to this, and he said one thing of note, I'll just say for the folks out here today, is that assessed value is based on January 1, 2017. And so as we know, I think this past year, we had around a 10% increase, or 8% increase. So if you did that over two years, and then he takes 15% off the top, he said, I think that would bring that gap a lot closer. But that is not, and that was all I wanted to state for clarification for anybody that didn't know, is that assessed value is not current day assessed value, that is based off January 1, 2017.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lynch, the rumblings continue to occur over Tiger Point and the city of Gulf Rees. I've tried to follow that the best I can. And we've talked about it before, I don't think that, that a building school in the middle of Tiger Point subdivision is a good idea, but that's what's being pushed again. I certainly have some concerns. I don't know that we've ever cleared up the argument that we had to start out with, where the city of Gulf Rees made multiple promises to the folks in Tiger Point. Undercut you specifically in the newspaper. I don't know where we stand on that, but due to the fact that this is an election year, it's something that's being kicked around pretty hard again. I don't believe, I mean, Santa Rosa County's already set precedence one time of not allowing a commercial operation within a residential subdivision. And that was a previous school issue in Navara, the private school. I didn't know how much you might have heard about that, and I wanted to throw it out there.
I'm not sure where the negotiations are at this point between the School Board and SSR US or the city. The School Board has, I don't believe they've ever come in front of the board and made any formal presentation about their intentions out there.
Right, and just, just for the record, again, the School Board is required to have a operational member on our planning board, which they periodically, they've certainly not been active on it. I think it's something that, that Santa Rosa County, as the VOCC, should encourage them to, to come in a little bit more. We're experiencing a lot of, a lot of growth right now, and if you don't participate, if you don't know what's going on in future subdivisions, if you don't have an active member, I'm not suggesting that they need to have a voting member, but I think they need to have a little more of an interest in it than what they've shown so far. And the main reason I wanted to say this at a public meeting is I want the folks in Tiger Point to know what they may be biting off. I know I wouldn't want a school plopped down in the middle of my existing subdivision, so. Second item, Monday, there was a good many political signs in the, in the center of the parking lot out here. Commissioner Parker, I don't think you were here when, when this occurred, and maybe not even Commissioner Williamson. We had a robust discussion about four years ago, that we weren't gonna have political signs in the median out here, or I won't go as far as to say as we agreed that there wasn't gonna be any in the parking lot, but we definitely said there wasn't gonna be any in the median out here. Of record, one of the folks' signs who disappeared prior to Tuesday morning, and I've got a picture here in my phone where Chris Long's signs are in the sign holding spot behind the, behind the county offices. At the same time, there's a truck in the parking lot that has one of your signs in it, Commissioner Cole. And I, I wanna be fair about this, and just as exactly what I said four years ago when we had this conversation, was, let's be fair. It's either signs for everybody, or signs for nobody. You, you guys are a policymaking board, that parking lot belongs to the taxpayers, you oversee that parking lot. So I'd like for us to clear this up. You know, we got a set of canoes out there with signs hanging on them that's chained to a light pole out there. I mean, in that case, that one's not even attached to a vehicle. But in fairness to folks that are running for office, and look, I can go either way. It doesn't matter to me. What I'm asking you guys to do is be fair across the board. If one person can have a political sign in a parking lot, then everybody should, should be allowed to have a political sign in a parking lot. I think you all are fair, fair-minded folks. But for a series of political signs on Monday to be plucked by opposition, and then today there's a Bob Cole sign sitting in a giant truck in the parking lot.
Whoa, 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 by opposition? By opposition?
No, your, your opposition had all of his signs plucked.
But it sounded like they were plucked by opposition.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying that, that, and I'm sure it was probably the code enforcement that, you know, was sent down there to pick them up, which that's fine. But, but everybody can look in the parking lot right now, and we still got a lot of political signs out there. So, you know, in all fairness, I think we need to have a policy, and it's either all or none. I, I think that's only fair. It looks kinda bad when, and I know there was a lot of things said on social media, where one candidate's signs are pulled and other, other folks are not pulled. And that's all I'm asking for, is just fairness.
Well, Jerry, fair enough, but how we control a private individual's private vehicle in a public parking lot with whatever's on it, it could say Joe's Pest Control on the side of it. If it's legally parked in our parking lot, I don't see where we have an ability. And I'm certainly willing to move mine if we decide on that to not allow it. But the handbook that we're given as candidates says you do not put your signs in public rightaways, whether it be out in the median on Highway 90, or any other road. Well, that's, that's the median. So that's, to me, and I think Mr. Pharaoh's signs were taken, and whoever else was in the median were also taken and put out there and available for them to get back and placed in, you know, I understand as a candidate, I have to have permission from a property owner to put a sign on their property, and cannot put any signs in the median. Now, a parking lot with advertising my business, or my candidacy, or anybody else's is a total different thing, and if this board decides that they're gonna have rules and regulations against that, I'm, I'm fine with that, too.
Well, I just, it, then, and you, and what you're saying is, you're defining the grassy knoll as the median, and that's illegal, but that parking lot is public rightaway. It belongs to the public. This whole parking lot here belongs to the public. So, you know, in all fairness, I, you know, it was pretty good last election cycle, it wasn't too bad, but if we're not gonna allow everybody, then we shouldn't allow anybody. So.
And, and my point is that, you know, if any candidate parks their vehicle out there with magnetic signs on it, or signs on the side, and it's a licensed, insured vehicle in the state of Florida, or any state as far as that goes, then, you know, it's, it's a parked vehicle.
So, so what about abandoned trailers that are chained to a light poles out there? Is that okay? Can I, can I start storing my trailer up here all the time? I mean, this is where we're going with this.
That's a stretch, yes, sir. And I appreciate bringing it up, and certainly if the board wants to address it, I'm open to, I will abstain from any conversation with the board, and, and follow whatever rules or, or whatever the board decides.
I just, I, it, it's about fairness.
Sure.
You know, look, it's a nice lighted parking lot, what you say, I just leave my boat up here all the time, then my dad wouldn't be mad at me for it being in his driveway, and I'd just hang a political sign on it 24 hours a day, every day. I mean, there's gotta be, there's gotta be some reason here, you know?
You made a good point, and I will, as I said, I will abstain from a conversation or a motion, and, and follow whatever rules the board lays out.
And I appreciate, I appreciate that. Approximately, I don't know, it's about a month and a half ago, I made a request to do an inspection on the house that the taxpayers own, Whiting Circle, and I'd like to reemphasize that. What, what, what do I need to do so that as a citizen and partial owner of that house, what do I need to do to be able to inspect that house?
Have you contacted the folks that are there? I think it's the public, I mean, it's the Longleaf Alliance, I think, it's, it's open to the public as far as I understand.
Is it?
Yeah.
So I can go anywhere I want to in there?
I assume that, that they don't have anything other than, I don't know, any security areas that have. They might, but, but I think that it's open to the public.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Jerry, before you leave, as one of your commissioners, you asked a question of me a few weeks ago of East Milt Fire Department, and, and I haven't dropped the ball on that. In fact, I've been working diligently with Donnie Spencer and his office, and Donnie, would you mind relaying what we've found?
What we've found so far, Jerry, is $10,000 CSX gave to East Volunteer Fire Department. They put it in their volunteer fund. They paid some of their employees with it, and from what we can tell so far, they did not issue 1099s. They also gave some to a charity. We're trying, we're in the process of working with them to try to get those records from them now, to find out what charity, and if they're gonna reissue a revised 1099 for those employees, which would be back about three or four years ago when that happened. So that's the status it works at right now.
And, and I appreciate that, and, and part of the reason for bringing it up to start out with was to let's stop it from happening from here on out. You know, that, that's all I'm asking. That was handled wrong, and you guys, you guys are with me on that, you know it was handled wrong, but we didn't, we didn't do tax forms, we haven't handled the IRS correctly and all of that. And as we move forward, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention this, we're going from $3 million worth of a fire tax to $5 million worth of a fire tax. We need to have clear, concise policies in place for all of these firehouses, so we don't get, we don't get into this again. That was just my simple plea, and Mr. Spencer, you know how to get a hold of me, so, thank you.
All right, I appreciate it, Jerry.
And Jerry, if I don't mind, if you don't mind me saying, I think we're all getting a little older, because your presentations are a little less, you know, hit, they don't quite have the hammer they used to have, and it's a lot. Yeah, stop blowing my head, okay.
Be careful, be careful.
No, seriously.
I'm simply rising in opposition on a few things.
You come up with a lot of good ideas, and a lot of good presentations, and a lot of things that I feel like are necessary for us as a board to hear. But you got to admit, in the past, a lot of times, all the flipping of paper, and pointing at this, and doing that, well, it got our attention, but it also, you know, we're all supposed to work together, not aggravate each other, and I appreciate.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm trying not to poke you, but there's some things that I'm very passionate about, and one of them's how we spend money around here. We're sitting in the largest budget this county has ever seen, and, and we need to pay a little more attention to how it's flying, because it's flying right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the podium? You got a lot of folks out here, anybody else have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, any direction from the board to change the, the existing policy we have on campaign signs in the parking lot? We have removed yard signs from the median as a standard practice and policy, but if a, a sign is affixed to a vehicle, or a, a mobile device, a trailer, we've allowed that to sit in the parking lot. Outside, of course, the perimeter that Tappy has established by Florida statute. Is there any, any desire for the board to change that current policy?
So then it is allowable currently about the, the trailer, trailers?
Under our existing standards, we would allow that trailer to sit there. Yes, sir. I'll take that as current policy is good. Thank you.
Show that absolutely I abstain and appreciate.
Good morning, my name is Darlene Hartigan, and I'm the president of Save Our Soundside, and I represent a fairly large member, number of the public in District 5. And we are, we're here to talk about a number of things, but we instituted a letter writing and petition campaign regarding what we consider to be rampant and unchecked development in the south, south end of Santa Rosa County. We brought to your attention problems with traffic, with school overcrowding, with flooding and disruption of evacuation zones, environmental concerns with the sound, groundwater loss, loss of floodplains, wildlife, and habitat, and more. But today, we are here specifically to talk about Nature's Cove. Nature's Cove is the third phase of a subdivision initially called the Waters. There's the Reserve at the Waters, and there's Nature's Cove. We believe that we have proven to the county commission in the form of letters and photographs that the developers at the Waters and the Reserve at the Waters have violated that the developers at The Waters and the Reserve at The Waters have violated the tree ordinances out there. We have sent Google Earth images in, Commissioner Lenthal, I know that you've seen these images, where they've just taken the bulldozers and they have scraped and clear cut all of the land that was a part of the first two phases of the subdivision. Now, Commissioner Lenthal, you sent me a letter not long ago saying that there is a tree ordinance and that these subdivision developers are, they are required to do a tree survey, and the tree survey is made part of the permitting process, and they have to save the heritage trees and things like that. Well, I think it's pretty clear that in the first two phases of the subdivision, they clear cut the land and they did not save any of the heritage trees. They actually took bulldozers and they made mountainous piles of trees in the area. Now, they have moved on to the third phase of the development. All of the green that you see to the west here, that's what's on the chopping block next to be bulldozed. We had a community meeting on Sunday, and then by Tuesday, the developers, I guess, got wind of it, and they had heavy duty equipment unloaded at the site. I sent urgent requests to all of you, specifically to you, Commissioner Lenthal, saying they have got earthmoving equipment being unloaded at the site. Please help. We don't believe that they're in compliance with the tree ordinances. We don't think a tree survey had been done. I sent you at least 20 photographs of heritage trees. You said you were going to send that on to the Development Services Department and have that made part of the tree ordinance and, you know, for the third phase. We asked you if, by virtue of the fact that they did not comply with the first two phases, if possibly they could do some mitigation on this third phase. Well, yesterday they started clearing. Now, we do not believe that all the permits have been gathered by these developers in order to allow them to go ahead and start clearing the land. We have not seen evidence, neither on your website or on the DEP Wetlands Mitigation Resource Permitting website, where they have their permits to start clearing this land. They're supposed to be posted, they're not posted, but they were there yesterday clearing with backhoes, they're there today clearing with backhoes, and we just got notified that in the rain they are out there clearing with backhoes. So that's something that I wanted to bring up, and I know, Commissioner Lenthal, that you sent us all the form letter saying that your hands are tied, that the legislature has tied your hands, that you cannot stop a development from going forward because the developers do not get their permitting done. But we're not here really about permitting, maybe partially, but we're here about the fact that they have violated the permits that they supposedly have. Tree ordinance permitting, for one. I think we've shown that they have violated that. So when there's violations on the first two phases of a subdivision, we do not understand why you would allow these developers to go on with the third phase of the development. Now, this third phase of the development, which is called Nature's Cove, has an exit and entrance coming out on what we call Dead Man's Curve on Soundside Drive. You know that Soundside Drive is a narrow winding road that parallels the waterway. There is a blind curve. This is where the entrance and exit for the subdivision is meant to come out. There are alternate routes that would take this subdivision out on the northern boundary to either Ocean Breeze Boulevard or Dormin Trail that will take it out to Highway 98. Now, as members of the community on Soundside and around Soundside, yes, we have an interest in the traffic on Soundside. It's gotten really bad, but there's more to it than that. Nature's Cove, if the only way in and out of Nature's Cove is on Soundside Drive, now that this other developed, two phases of development have gone through, we now have flooding on Soundside Drive that we've never had before, even with a minor rain event. This is the only evacuation route. If this subdivision comes out on Dead Man's Curve on Soundside Drive, well, then, if they go to the right or to the left to try to get out of the area, get to 98, they are going to be trapped. We're all going to be trapped, but these are new houses going in. So there's a chance now to give them a way out of this subdivision without being caught in the event of an evacuation. We have plots that the developers had where they had a right of way coming out of the north boundary of the subdivision. They've now changed that to Lot Number 35. I have pictures, I've emailed the plat maps to you, to all of you, I do believe, and so you have those. But today, I just want to say that, you know, we fought the rezoning of, you know, the developers were after rezoning to R1A of these two subdivisions. We fought it, we were successful. Commissioner Lenthal said you were not going to vote for any increasing of the density in our area along the sound, and we appreciate that. But what we are, what we want right now is, because they have violated the permits, at least the tree ordinance, probably more, we're asking that they, they stop the development right now and look at this northern exit as opposed to Dead Man's Curve. Just take a breath, and let's step back and look at this, and let's do what's right for the, for the community. Let's talk about mitigating, you know, the damage that they've done with the trees and the native flora and fauna of the area. We can do something in this third phase to make that right, but we want reasonable and responsible development. We want it policed, and last of all, I'm just going to throw this out there because this is where we're headed. We want a new master plan in the south end of Santa Rosa County. Now, Pace had the lakes of Woodbine, the public came up in arms. Sam Parker, you were good enough to stop that development, and the people in Pace wanted, they were worried about traffic on Woodbine Road. Woodbine Road can handle a whole lot more traffic than Soundside Drive can. You know, you have gotten a master plan, the first phases of implementation on that, and Rob Williamson, on behalf of Navarre, and the rapid development that's going on in the south end of the county, you have gotten, you, master plan approved, there's a brochure up there, you guys are going to be looking at doing that. I don't know if you have been to the south end of Santa Rosa County lately, but we have got rampant development. You guys approved four subdivisions in Gulf Breeze in September alone. We have rampant development, and we need a new master plan. That's part of what we want, and that, going forward, that's going to be one of our focuses. So I know that I've put a lot of things out there today, but these are the main areas of concern that I'm here to talk about.
Commissioner Lenthal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all for being here this morning. And I appreciate your concerns, and I'll try to tackle them as best we can. And just to let you know, some of the things that I've been working on over the past few weeks, I was contacted by a resident that had, that said your group had a lot of concerns with the Septic to Sewer project under Restore. So I've had county staff working on that over the past week and a half, along with staff from SSR US and the city of Gulf Breeze compiling a list of responses to those questions. And I'll be reaching out with that information here soon. With regard to the tree ordinance, received your email, I spoke with Sean Ward, our Development Services Planning and Zoning Director. The Nature's Cove project did submit a tree survey. It's part of any application for development order on a subdivision. They're subject to our tree ordinance, they submitted a tree survey. They have to protect and preserve any champion or heritage tree that is shown on that survey. I spoke with Sean this morning. Our compliance officers will be out there making sure that they comply with the tree The, I'm not sure about the other, you mentioned violations of the tree ordinance on the prior developments that they did. I'm, I don't know where that comes from.
Well, you can see, pardon me, you can see from the Google Earth photographs that no trees were left. So I think, you know, by virtue of that, that is a violation. There were no heritage trees saved on that, on that piece of property, on those two pieces of property. These are acres and acres.
And we can ask Development Services to take a look at that and the tree surveys that were submitted at the time that those construction plans were issued, and if they violated the tree surveys, then that's, that's something that the county can take a look at in terms of mitigation or fines or what have you.
This represents a clear cut scraping, and that's what a lot of tract builders do before they go in, and they don't want to work around trees, and that's why we're asking for mitigation of this damage to be done over on this third phase of the construction. Now, I know Becky Cato was in your management department when the first two phases, the tree survey was done. She now works for the developer, so I don't know, that might, maybe you can get some answers a little bit quicker about what they're, they're going to do.
Yeah, we'll ask our staff to take a look at the tree surveys that were submitted as part of the first two developments and compare that to what's out there now and see if there were any violations. But the current phase, the Nature's Cove, is subject to our tree ordinance. They've submitted their tree survey, and we're going to have our code compliance making sure that they comply with the requirements that are on the construction documents.
Is the tree survey public record? Can we see it? Because I've got 25 photographs of 100-year-old oaks and things out there.
I'm getting a nod, yes, so we can.
Is it on the?
I doubt it'll be online. It's something that, where would they be able to get a copy of that?
Certainly subdivision plans are available in the engineering office for review, and as far as, if they submitted a separate tree survey, that may be in Sean's office in Development Services. Certainly, one of those two locations.
Okay. We'll make sure that if you have any trouble locating it, let me know, but Development Services, that'd probably be the best place to start with Sean Ward.
Okay. Commissioner Lenthal, the photographs of the trees that I sent to you, you said you were going to send on to Development Services for addition in the tree survey. Did you?
That is Sean Ward, yes, in Development Services. I forwarded those photos to him.
Commissioner Lenthal?
With regard to zoning, move on from the tree ordinance just for a moment, with regard to zoning down there and a master plan, our master plan countywide essentially is our zoning overlay. You know, the zoning was instituted in Santa Rosa County about 30 years ago, is that right? Late 80s, early 90s, Roy?
That's correct.
And I spoke with Sean about that as well. He pulled the records for Soundside. He found one parcel in that area that had been rezoned, where density had been increased since zoning was instituted in the area. That was back in the early 90s, down on the east end. There was a R1 that went to R2. Other than that, all of the property down there, or just about all of the property down there, is zoned R1. We get requests, we've regularly gotten requests since I've been on the board over the last 10 years, for rezonings on Soundside and to increase that residential density. We have rejected those. We do not allow increased density down there as a general rule in the Soundside area. So the developments that have gone in have gone in pursuant to existing zoning, what they can do. The situation in Pace is completely different. That big development that was proposed in Pace was in, I believe it was in Agricultural District?
I think it was.
They were proposing to go to R1 and R2 and commercial. They were, they were a rezoning. They were going to change the zoning district to allow that development. That is not the case with any of the subdivisions that have been built in Soundside. Those are all R1 subdivisions. They don't have to come to us and ask to build those subdivisions. They're entitled to build, is it four homes per acre in R1? Now, they have to meet all of our subdivision requirements and our construction requirements, but if they check all of those boxes, they're entitled to build four homes per acre on any of that R1 property.
Did you have a question?
Well, I'd just like to respond, with all due respect, there's more to it than zoning, more to it than R1 four houses per acre. I mean, we are in a very sensitive area along the coast of the sound, and what's happening is, there's other things that's got to be taken into perspective here and to consider. We've got new subdivisions coming in that are built at the new, with the new elevation requirements. They're far higher in elevation than the existing homes. Well, what, and you've got the sound here, you've got new construction here, and you've got the existing taxpayer homeowners living here, and so the water runs downhill. We are experiencing flooding on our streets, cutting off evacuation zones, and flooding houses, existing houses. I mean, if, if you shouldn't build four houses per acre because of other considerations, you can't just look at four houses per acre, R1 in a vacuum. That's my point.
And I understand that, and that gets into our stormwater management plan and the standards that we have in place for that. I was just speaking to the core issue of development and rezoning and the difference between one that we can deny, like the one in Pace, and the ones where we don't have the ability to do so. But I'd be glad to meet with the homeowners, probably would be better than sitting up here, and I'll get with you, and we'll set up a time to get together and meet as a group and go over all of these issues. And see what we can do to make sure that our community is, continues to be a great place to live and play.
Thank you.
Right. Roy, I, if I might, Lane, do we, what I'm afraid of right now is that the developer's going to obviously know about this conversation, and we're at Thursday, tomorrow's Friday, and then we got, so they got the rest of the day and three days that they can move forward, I guess, possibly violating our tree ordinance. Do we have any, any way of getting down there and seeing if it's been violated on the first two phases and put a stop on development?
I think our code compliance.
Well, no, no, this, I'm not, you know, we don't need the applause, I just, I've just seen it happen before, you know?
I think our code compliance officers have already been directed to, to review what's taking place down there and what's taking place, and if they violate our ordinance, there are sanctions, including mitigation, that are required for that violation.
Well, okay. So their boots on the ground now? I mean, okay, and I think they need to know that.
And that's, that's one thing, I spoke with Sean this morning and reiterated, our code compliance is going to be monitoring that construction to make sure that they comply with our tree ordinance, and there's a tree survey in the file, so we know what the existing state is down there. And those champion and heritage trees, if any, on the property have been identified.
And this question, I guess to Roger. I'm sorry, this question go to Roger. If, you know, it was indicated that there's a lot that could have been a, an exit route or a connectivity to another road. Why would we not enforce that instead of letting them have Boulevard access to Soundside? Why would we not enforce that instead of letting them have Boulevard access to Soundside? I mean, on an engineering perspective, wouldn't that be a better alternative to have two in a subdivision rather than one? Or do we, I mean, is that something we could suggest? Is that something we can hold them to? As Commissioner Lynch had indicated, they, they don't come back to us for, you know, a review, so it's pretty much planned review in your department.
That is correct, and we follow the LDC about the number of connections and those sorts of things, but let me review it, and I can get back to the board very quickly.
I would certainly feel like, you know, in the future, if it's too late on this one, but in the future, that we pretty much push back from the Boulevard exits if, if there's capacity to connect to another road that would, you know, make, make it better for everybody, I guess. I know, you know, as soon as we do that, we're going to hear complaints from people on that road. Why are you making these people go out on our road instead of Soundside? But, you know, fair is fair.
And Commissioner Cole, the preliminary plaid or sketch that was sent to me earlier this week that showed that northern access on the, it was on the northeast part of this particular parcel, was a stubout that showed access going to the north. I pulled up the property appraiser's website, though. They don't own that property to the north of them. The developer, there's, it, it stubs out into a parcel that is on, is that Dorman that goes east-west?
Dorman Trail.
It stubs out onto the, to a parcel on Dorman Trail that they don't own. So I'm not sure if that was something that they were contemplating when they were putting the sketch together, but they don't own that parcel, so they, they would not be able to access Dorman Trail.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you. I live directly across the street from, oh, I'm sorry, Robert Simcoe. I live at 4563 Soundside Terrace in Gulf Breeze. I live directly across the street from the proposed entranceway to this Nature's Cove. When I leave my house, I come to a stop sign, and I have to get onto Soundside Drive. And what I do is I look east to see if there's any cars coming. I look to the west to see if any car's coming, and I cannot hesitate. I cannot hesitate one second, because if I hesitate one second with a car going 35 miles an hour, I might be hit, might be. There are so many times when I've pulled out and I pulled out slightly and I saw the car coming, and I had to pull back, because if I continue to try to get across the street and to get into the lane going west, I'm not going to make it. It'll be impossible. If the car is going 12% faster, which is 40 miles an hour, I won't make it. I will probably be in an accident. At 45 miles an hour, which is 24% faster, I will be probably dead. At 50 miles an hour, and they've gone 50 miles an hour down that street around dead, they call Dead Man's Curve, and I live right there, there's no chance of making it. We only have four families living on Soundside Terrace. Unfortunately, I wish we had more, because I would have a little bit more strength behind me, but we have four. One of the people is an individual who has a motorized wheelchair on the back of her car. And I sometimes wondered to myself, if she got into the same situation that I, what would she do? My reflexes, and I'm, I'm an old guy, I'm probably older than anybody here at this, in this room, my reflexes are still pretty good. I can make that, and pull back real quick, but at 45 miles an hour, and that's only 10 miles an hour faster than the speed limit on Soundside Drive, I won't stand a chance. If the, if the cars, again, as I said, if the car's going 50 miles an hour, I'm dead. You might as well just get out the sponges and the wet mops and mop me up, because I'm, I'm going to be finished. The amount of cars that are going down Soundside right now, and the people haven't even moved in, are spiraling up and up and up. There is such a large change in the amount of cars coming around that corner. You cannot see the car, when you pull up, you can't see because of the curve. It's impossible. I wish every one of you would just, maybe one day, go down there and go onto Soundside Terrace and see what I mean. It is almost impossible to get out. To get out onto the west side to make a left-hand turn to get onto that street takes about two seconds, two and a half seconds. That's too long. I'll never make it. The car coming around that corner is so close that we'll, we'll have an accident. All I'm asking you people to do, very, very easily, if possible, is to block that exit ramp on Soundside Drive. Right now, they're beginning to build the road that will be leading into this Nature's Cove. The bulldozer was out there yesterday digging up trees and such, and it's just a matter of probably a couple of weeks before this, this takes place. I'm asking you to block Soundside Drive, the entrance or the exit on Soundside Drive. And like you said, I've walked from Soundside up to Ocean Breeze Boulevard. It's not a very long walk. It's a straight line. If you've ever walked it, all of a sudden you come to and you see Ocean Breeze. It's such a, to me, to make, to make that road, it would be so simple to have everybody exit and entrance onto 98, Route 98. So if they want to go 50 miles an hour, 55 miles an hour, they can slow down and make their right-hand turn, and there will be no problem. But we are going to have a problem on Soundside Drive. Somebody is going to get smashed real bad. I've come close a couple of times, but luckily, 30, 35 miles an hour were being kept. But once it gets to be 40 or 45, and remember, we have a state college not too far down, and we have all sorts of activity now coming on Soundside. So I'm asking you, I'm pleading with you, try, try to stop that entrance going into, off of Soundside Drive, and give me a chance to get out and into my particular home. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Simcoe. And Simcoe, right, Mr. Simcoe?
Right.
Simcoe?
Simcoe.
Simcoe, okay.
S.I.M.C.O.L.
Oh, thank you. And I have had a couple of complaints of speeding on Soundside Drive since we did the resurfacing project and the, the additional shoulder bike lane there. So we can do a traffic analysis on Soundside to see if there are anything, any, any speed control measures that we can incorporate on Soundside to, to adjust some of that speeding.
That might help. I'm not in favor of speed bumps.
Right.
Per se.
Yeah.
I don't think you would be too.
No.
Soundside Drive has been repaved. It's a beautiful road right now, and I think it's, what it's doing is enticing people to think that they're at Le Mans or up in Bristol, Tennessee, and they think that their speed driver's. We had an individual coming from the east going west. He was going so fast, he knocked over my neighbor's post, post box. He catapulted over the, over the waterway there, in between my property and the other property, and he landed on my property. I'm still picking up pieces of his car. Two to three years later, I'm still picking up pieces of his car. So it's that one person. Do you follow?
Absolutely.
In other words, 75% of the, 80% of the people drive the speed limit, but it's the other 20% that I'm really worried about. Thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. I just feel, you know, as the, the one that's kind of exiting here, as I'm hearing some of this, I've had the experience of watching Commissioner Lynch advocate for folks in his district, and it's one of those, this is an example of darn it if you do, darn it if you don't. I mean, he leaned in when members of the community were talking about Soundside and, and worked on getting the road widened from where it is to where there could be more space for folks. I'm thinking of the unbelievable project for the multi-use path and coming up with creative ways to try to make that happen where it goes to funding or other things. The Miracle League, I mean, whenever folks come to Commissioner Lynch, it's been my experience that he actively engages and looks for ways to solve the problem. And so I, I absolutely know without a doubt that you're going to have the opportunity to meet with him and share your concerns, and there's, he's going to take action, because that's what he's done. So I think you'll get solutions there. One other thing I was going to say is about the master plan that you mentioned. Commissioner Lynch is right. We have a document right now that, that is our master plan to a degree, and it's this document that covers the entirety of the county, and that's the rules of the game today. And that means that the concerns that you have, if there are specific land development changes for your district, then that's how the system works. You bring that to your district commissioner and working with staff, you know, being as its government, it doesn't happen usually as quickly as we might like it to happen, but that land development code will change, and it'll change based on the advocacy and the interests that you have. I think we're seeing that in District Four. We're now, after several years really of talking about it, just tonight, we're going to get the presentation for the draft of the District Four master plan. It still won't be finished until Commissioner-elect Peach comes in and continues to work on that. So we could be three years by the time we go from folks like yourself from District Four coming in, expressing their concerns, to putting out a product that we could incorporate into the land development code to bring about some changes. So all of that to say, don't stop advocating for what you want. A master plan or district-specific changes to development in your area are absolutely possible, and I think you've got a leader that has proven himself willing to be responsive to the needs of the community. Just be patient. It, it doesn't happen overnight. And please keep attending the meetings as well. You can give me that 10 bucks, you know, later.
And I'd pretty much have to say the same thing about my opportunity to work for the last several terms with Commissioner Lynch. And I just want him to know that, as I've sent emails back to you, that if he comes up with something that suits his district, I've very seldom voted against it, because he, he puts a lot of forethought and knowledge and planning into it and works with the citizens. So I'll share that with y'all as well as Commissioner Lynch.
My name is Michael Brower. I live in the Soundside community. Hope you all saw your, we got in the Pensacola News Journal that the red tide is in Santa Rosa County waters now. Thank you, Chairman Cole. We agree that we need to work together. We agree that we need to protect our water quality. I've spent a lot of my life on the water. I first came to this area in 1972. I took my commissioning oath and won my wings on the parade deck at NAS Pensacola. I served in naval aviation for over, across three decades, both in war and peace. I was honored to lead 43 carrier air wing strikes into Iraq during Desert Storm. Since then, I've been the senior federal policy director at a major New York law firm, Hiscock &amp; Barclay, and a corporate energy group president and CEO. My wife and I moved back to Santa Rosa County in 2015 because we wanted this quality of Since then, we've observed what can only be, is rampant California development on the Soundside. We have watched while native and heritage trees, because we bird, and we've spent a lot of time at the former site of the waters, when it was part of Dick Godwin's land, with his permission, birding and looking at the native species there. Protected animals and birds, and the water quality of the sound decimated. So I know who I served. Who do you all serve? You serve the taxpayers of Soundside, or Alabama developers, or Texas bankers? Now, I'm not against property rights. We expect our property rights to be defended, but we expect due diligence. And developers who form LLCs, do their dirty work, and then disappear and dissolve their LLC with no accountability, leaves you all hanging, holding the, holding the bag, because you approved their developments. So we have no place to turn except to you, and you're going to hear from us, you're really going to hear from us on the November 8th, when you're out at Tiger Point. But I want to talk to you about stormwater and flooding, because I spend a lot of time on the water, and I love saltwater. We ask you for a pause until the developer publicly clarifies how they plan to reduce peak discharges, reduce volume, use natural recharge, reduce pollutant and nutrient loading, and specifically articulates in writing the 11 questions that I sent to you all on the 5th of October. And I sent it to all of you. We've also sent it to Florida DEP and to the U.S. EPA, and we really haven't heard from any of you, not even you. How are they going to protect and sustain the natural water, stormwater management system? Which is, we live on a sandbar. That's what the Fairmont Peninsula is. It's a sandbar. It's a, it's a recovered barrier island. There are no highlands there. It's all Gulf, Gulf Coast and lowlands. And when you take the trees off it, like they have, the sand washes away back to the sea. And that's what's happening. We have people who will tell you stories of when they put their boathouse up on Brickyard Bayou, and how people used to dive off the top of the boathouse into the bayou. Now, there's been so much runoff from development that it's no longer safe to even jump off the, the top of the, the boathouse. Probably wasn't safe then either. How do the, how does the developer plan to protect and sustain our natural areas? They're disappearing right before our very eyes. The wetlands. In the Nature's Cove site, there is a shrub bog. Do you know how amazing it is to have a shrub bog in a, in this habitat? Normally, you have to have a pan underneath, a clay pan underneath the bog to create that bog. But here in this small, as big as this room area, you have an entirely different habitat, which has hundreds of Florida-protected trees, plants, and animals, right there. Now, I promise you that it's not on their tree survey. Now, I promise you that it's not on their tree survey. I won't promise you. I'll bet you, I haven't seen it. I'll bet you. And it's a question that needs to be asked because tree surveys, when you ask the developer with a stake in the game to do the survey, means that you've put the fox in the henhouse. Of course, they're going to say, oh, they're not there. Well, thank God, we've had Dara here. She went out, and we all went out and surveyed a third of the property. We only saw a third of the property because it's wild, it's full of snakes, it's, you know. And I had four women with me, and they were leading the way. We're losing our legacy, you know, and I think that you guys don't agree with that. I think you're all pretty conservative. And I think, like Theodore Roosevelt thought, that we need to protect some of the things we had before. I'm not going to preach at you, but we need to make sure that somebody checks all the boxes. We did it before every strike. We checked on every box so that we didn't have unforeseen circumstances. You can't predict everything. And sir, your traffic studies were dated in 2016, and I got to tell you, there's been 180 houses built on Soundside since then. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll continue to review the, Roger.
Yes, I've been in communication with my office, and the gentleman who just described the wetlands is the issue, that there was no connection to Ocean Breeze is because the portion that they have approved, the preliminary plat and construction plans, are those uplands that are separated from the Ocean Breeze by a wetland is delineated on the preliminary plat submitted to my office.
I suggest you send your guy back out there because Godwin's Farm Road runs all the way up to Darman Trail and then turns left north of the wetland and connects directly on a hard upland trail right to Ocean Breeze. There's a gate there.
Thank you.
I've been there.
Like I said, we're going to go over, Sean Ward's going to present sort of a Development 101 down at the November 8th meeting at Tiger Point, to go over some of these questions and concerns about development and how that has moved forward over the last 30 years and how it will going forward.
Thank you for your time. My name's Scott Zabarin. I live on Soundside Drive. I hate public speaking. I'm a licensed general contractor. I do commercial construction, federal courthouse building in downtown Winston E.R.O. is part of that, Navy Federal Credit Union, I'm part of that. I'm very aware of what's called SWIP, Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan, which if anybody's done any kind of development knows about that. I don't see any entry ways to the construction that they've done or this that follows any of those laws. No silt fences, no silt fences around ponds. So I see violations of SWIP. There's best management practices that are associated with that, and I don't see any of that being implemented. I know for what I do in commercial construction, if I don't do those, the EPA has major violations. I don't mess with residential. I don't want to, I love neighbors, but I'd like to not have to have them as business partners. I stay in commercial. There's strict laws in commercial. I feel like residential sometimes is much more lenient. I don't think that should be the place. I think if I have to abide by it in commercial, so should residential, especially about stormwater prevention. That's all I have.
Thank you. And we'll make sure that our enforcement officials know that you have some concerns about the runoff plan down there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roy, I need to ask something. How much authority, or what's the authority, or what's the, I guess, the channel that our code enforcement people have to use? If they get down there and find, you know, just as the gentleman just said, no silt fencing up, improper management practices, violation of the tree ordinance, I guess, what's their authority to issue a cease and desist, or does it, stop work order?
They can do that if they find an ongoing, present violation.
Okay. They don't need board action. They don't need to come back to you. They just, okay. All right. Then, as Commissioner Lynch said, and I've said, we have people down there, and I'm going to ask Dan, you know, let them know that this, as far as I'm concerned, I don't mean to speak for the entire board. I think we've heard enough today that I would hope they would step up to the plate on this one and don't hesitate to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm doing my best to try to not speak, but I just feel like with those comments, I just think it's an appropriate time while I have the board here, and sometimes it does help, honestly, to have people in the audience. First, I want to say thank you to everyone of you for coming, waiting through our meeting. I know you spent two and a half hours of your day today. We can all go make extra money, but we can't make extra time. So thank you for caring about your community. I'm the newest member of the board. Been on here a little under two years, and I know that I've had the opportunity to speak with some of our administration, obviously recently even over things in our issue. So I'll try to be as brief as I can. Our former county administrator, Tony Gamilian, told me that currently, right now, I don't think we even have a code enforcement department. I think we have a code compliance department. And he said that the reason that was is years passed, the board took the stance of, just recapping a private meeting, that we wanted to bring folks more into compliance rather than an enforcement-type arm. And so I know for the almost two years that I've sat on the board, I think many times this board, probably all of us at different points in time, or at least several of us have, have almost on the borderline of basically had to apologize for things that have happened, even if it comes to our special zoning meetings. And I know we've heard case after case, especially at these zoning meetings, to where issues were going on for not only months, but sometimes well over a year. And I say that is, what prompted me to speak today was basically the comment of, does code enforcement have the ability to go out there? Well, yes. But the unfortunate thing is, and this has been documented several times, and again, I won't go into detail, but I think even administrations are aware of a few, is that they have authority, but that authority's not always exercised. And I think maybe we're getting to the point after two years of over and over again, and I know Commissioner Williamson has even spoken on this several times, about, you know, basically stepping up because there's other things that I know of, I'm aware of. I think Commissioner Lynch even has something in his district that had nothing to do with this that is frustrating with the time. So maybe, I guess my question is, is to Roy or to the county administrator, what steps we would need to take in maybe a future meeting or whatever to come back and with some recommendations that this board then could, I guess, express the thought of, again, just going off of what our former administrator said, that maybe our thought process now more is to a stricter enforcement of the codes on the books rather than the, we want to see you bring into a compliance, which from my experience has been, okay, they're in violation, I left a note, or I gave a warning, or they're in violation, or I don't follow back up with it until it's basically another fester that's about to pop. And that's how we get into those cases that, and I think I've honestly probably heard Commissioner Williamson express those sentiments more than any of us at even some of these special district cases, or sorry, our special rezoning meetings, to where now we're having to deal with a code compliance issue that's over a year old. So what steps do we need to take for this board? I feel like I've heard a majority, at least of the current board, state now that we do want to become a little bit more enforcement to where we don't have to say, I mean, it's sad to me as a former law enforcement officer that we as an elected board are having to sit here and say, do we have our code compliance going down there, and are they going to do their job in essence? Because that's how I feel. I mean, and I feel that we've been disappointed with that. So what steps do we need to take to, as a board, tighten that up?
Hey, Dan, before you jump off, can I just say real quick? When I met with Tony, he gave me the same overarching view of the county and the history of code compliance. And I know for our district specifically, you know, I rode the areas of South Santa Rosa County with code compliance and with the county administrator, and, you know, it wasn't that the areas of J were going to be treated the same as the areas of Navarre. That's unrealistic, and that's also not going to be received well. But it seemed to be clear that the District Four that I represent wanted to have a more robust code enforcement going on. I think that's fair to say. And so I know it was my understanding that there was going, we were going to see that more robust code enforcement. And that's probably been one area where I have definitely failed in my follow-up in expressing the importance of that. So I know you have a lot of challenges, and we, you know, the county does, as we continue to improve the culture and everything that we're doing here, and we do a lot of things really well right now. But just speaking for District Four specifically, I think the code enforcement area is an area that is ripe for improvement and disruption, and I think it would be welcomed by the residents there to move more toward a proactive code enforcement as opposed to maybe what we have been, which is more of a reactive code compliance.
On next meeting's agenda, there is already a topic on code compliance, code enforcement. I've asked the building official and Sean Ward as the directors in Development Services and Randy Jones, our code compliance supervisor, to put together a presentation, to put together an SOP because our code is rather general and leaves a lot open to interpretation and subjectivity. So I've asked them to put a standard operating procedure together that we'll present to you at the next meeting that puts some detail and specificity into the code enforcement. There are a couple of recommendations that we'll have for you at that to start to get back to what this board has highlighted over several occasions and specifically today, that code enforcement is a priority. One of the issues is we have four officers, four individuals, to cover the entire county. So that is part of the challenge. I don't know that we were ready to bring a recommendation to put more staff in that department at this point in time, but that may be something we get to, to cover the vastness of the county from a code enforcement perspective. But you'll see that on the next agenda, and we've already had that planned.
And I want to let the public know and the rest of the board know that I've had similar conversations with Dan and the Assistant County Administrator on just that. We've got to get a little more aggressive. We've got a truck stop that, quite frankly, around it looks worse than a, you go out to our landfill and it looks better kept than the truck stop. We've got people living in campers and using the bathroom in the woods. We've got issues with people developing and pretty much thumbing their nose at our tree ordinance and planning a stick as a mitigation means. So there's a lot that we have to do as a board. I feel like our new county administrator and his staff is aware of these things. Each one of us commissioners have brought these issues to them, and I think we're going to see some, as Dan said, on the next agenda and start seeing some more changes to that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just wrap up my comments. To Dan, I appreciate knowing that that's going to be on the next agenda. I would just hope that now, at least that we know that the majority of the board has, you know, expressed it. And again, a lot of times, this is not the only case where it does start at the top. So anything that's gone wrong and even problems that were here before any of us were here, we inherited those when we got elected. And so improvement starts at the top. And so, you know, I apologize if things like these trees ordinances have been violated out there, but I hope that when those recommendations come forward, it'll come forward with that full knowledge of knowing not only implementation, but if we need more enforcement. I would hope that you wouldn't hesitate to ask that, just like as Sheriff Johnson has come to us many times during mid-budget cycles and say, here's something I need, and this board has addressed that for public safety. And I think, again, this goes back to that. I mean, we've got fellows talking about, you know, not only losing the habitat, and I'm for public rights, but, you know, you start talking about things like sand washing away on Barrier Island, and I'm not an engineer, but, you know, I do know it even talks in the Bible about sand. So I just say that to Dan. I hope, and I apologize to have to have that conversation in public, but I just felt like today, in front of the commissioners, maybe we've got there that we can finally turn that around. So I appreciate it.
All right. Any other comments from the public? Anybody from staff?
Yes, sir. I got one in the county administrator agenda section that I want to start. I've taken Mr. Gamilian's Employee of the Quarter recognition program and expanded it to a broader employee recognition program. We're going to recognize folks at significant anniversaries with presentations and awards. And we started last, two weeks ago while I was out. Mark started with recognizing Mr. Lee Callahan, who retired after 30 years. So I'm going to use this time to recognize those folks who have made that commitment and served Santa Rosa County. And I'll turn it over to Mark as he was there for the presentation with Mr. Callahan.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. It was a pleasure for me to recognize Mr. Callahan after 30 years of employee. He started with a county member of 1988, started as Equipment Operator One, and then rose to the position of Road Operations inmate supervisor. Stephen Furman and I had the opportunity to honor him in a very low-key ceremony in the front office. It's what he asked for, but as Dan and I have talked about, it's important that we do honor these folks who have contributed a lifetime of service to our county. Specifically, we highlighted that his first evaluation was, after three months, highlighted as outstanding, and he's been on an upward trajectory ever since. We were able to present to him two presentos. One is a, basically, a crystal plaque honoring his service, and you could tell that he was touched by that. When I asked him specifically if there was something that, you know, he looked back on his service here, he was proud of, he highlighted something that's happened very recently, and that was the salary survey and how this board has recognized our folks' hard work and increased their pay. I found that very noteworthy because that has had almost zero impact on him, but it just proves that his commitment has been to those that he's worked alongside for 30 years. So it was a privilege for us to be able to do that. I look forward to doing that with Dan in the days, weeks, and months and years to come because taking care of our people is something that's very, very important to all of us. That was a great opportunity. So thanks, Dan. I appreciate that.
And not to belay things, but I should recognize also all our employees that recently went to the aid of our neighboring counties. I just take too long to name each one of them off, but there was a great effort put forth to our neighbors by Santa Rosa County and several departments. I thank those folks. Anything else? All right. We're adjourned.